All right, welcome everyone and thanks for coming out a little early this evening. We're going to, before we get started with the, going over the agenda for the next board meeting, we've got a special presentation is, I think everyone in here has been a part of, at least in some part of working on our new updated strategic plan for the next five years, where we want and what we want the Barrow County school system to be and look like five years from now. That has been very ably led by our own Dr. Angela Moten and Dr. Russ Cook. Russ, of course, is with the UGA and the center over there. And so we're going to turn it over to them and they're going to present the draft of what all these months of work have come down to.
All right.
Just to make sure real quick, it's like they're all muted.
There's always a little button you have to push, isn't there? Always something. So, very good. So, welcome everyone who's alive. Russ Cook here, talking about the strategic plan. And so, at the board table, I have just a short little agenda to kind of give you a review of what we did and planning for the strategic plan. As you know, we always tie this to the government standards as a part of your training. And although today, we won't be having enough time to count this training, we did for the education summit, a four or six hours of training for the board for that session. And these were the two standards since we adopted. So, you'll remember, it seems like only yesterday, it's at the education summit, where we looked at through the decades, the progress of our act schools. And so that's kind of what I'm going to do very briefly this evening is just kind of recap where we've been, where we are, and where to go. And that's the cycle of strategic planning. In winter of 2021, we launched several community discussion groups in the two clusters of the high school. And asked individuals to, we did that online, to answer those five essential questions about strategic plans. From those meetings, we received over 200 individual responses of significance during those sessions. And so I organized all that information so that when we have the education summit, which involved our board and members of the community, as well as staff, teachers, administrators, we would have all that data to take a look at and begin to strategically look at what are going to be the directions over the next five years. And so, you were a part of that, you were in a group. You'll recall the activities that we did that day, did us some learning to read. Following that, we met on March 26th, I mean, I'm sorry, April 22nd, with P. Staff in the school system, we met right here in this room a little bit. We took all of the information that we received from the summit and we looked at it in terms of a more streamlined strategic plan with four goals. And so, I led the group through a number of activities that got us to certain places that helped us answer the questions that we had during those discussion groups. And so after April 22nd, it was then time for the staff to be working on the committees, never how they were going to be organized, to work on the work. And then start to put the plan together so that we could come back to the board with an overview, a template if you will, of where we are and what we're going to be doing. And so, down the road, there will come a time where you will be building on this strategic plan to adopt it. But tonight, it's a little bit of time, it's just to kind of give you an update on where we are. Dr. Moten is going to review the plan and we'll open the floor after she does her questions, comments. And then, along the way, Dr. McMichael will be letting you know the next steps to adopt it. So that's the plan. So, Dr. Moten, would you like to come forward and let's take a look at the draft?
Thank you, Dr. Cook. In front of you, you have a brochure. And on the inside of the brochure, you can see the strategic goals and priorities. There are four goals, and under each of those goals, you see a set of priorities. The first goal is academics and student success. You can see five priorities there, and those priorities under academic and student success center around early learning, leadership development, school improvement, a K-12 vertically and horizontally aligned curriculum, and a safe and positive learning environment. So those are our priorities there. And then, under elevating the teaching profession, under the program heading to the right there, there are four strategic priorities there. And I will say, under academic and student success, I was the facilitator for that group or that team. And then, under elevating the teaching profession, Ms. Cindy Banks, Assistant Superintendent for Planning and Personnel, led that group. And the priorities there are partnerships with colleges, universities, and community leaders. Also, grow our own program where we are producing students who are interested and return back to Barrow County to service teachers. Targeted John Day professional learning, and a competitive compensation package. The next goal is communication and culture, led by Ms. Shinley Roundtree, Director of Communications. And there are four priorities there. Those four priorities include improving consistency and transparency of communication, increasing family engagement for all Barrow County families, increasing community business and business engagement. And then the last one, under communication and culture, is a diverse, a diversity action plan. Again, that's a diversity action plan. And the last goal that has three priorities, this team was led by Ms. Jennifer Houston, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. There are three priorities that are indicated there. And those include maintaining quality buildings, secure and allocate resources to maintain essential programs and functions for the school system, and leveraging technology and digital tools that meet the needs of students and staff effectively and efficiently. I will also say that this is a, an overview of the entire plan. It is more than just this brochure, because under each of the goals and priorities, these teams develop specific action steps. So it goes in depth on how those goals and priorities will be achieved. So at this time, Dr. McMichael, if you have anything to add and also any questions?
No, I just, just to say that I think this is a great overview piece for, you know, we don't want to get too, too granular with this. And I think this is, I think we've hit all the, you all have hit all the high points and things that were, a lot to keep us busy here for the next five years, working on. And just a great job putting all this together.
So as you look at those four goals and the priorities that accompany those, are there any questions?
Angela, how are we going to measure the success as we move along this five-year path? Do you have some SMART goals in place? Do we have some metrics? Or, I mean, what, where do we go from here, I guess?
Good question. We have departmental plans. We also have a school, a district plan that we'll use. And then each school has a school improvement plan that will support the strategic plan. So we will, will review those on cycles and increments of time to look back at our success and what our next steps toward attainment of all these goals will be.
Okay. And those are in writing, they're, people own those?
Yes, those are in writing.
And there, it's a scaffolded system, basically, like we've done the past five years. We have the overview, district plan, and then, as Angela said, you've got the district level underneath that, departmental levels, and then school levels. And each one of those has various action plans that support and are tied to these goals. Just like you see when we, when we have our board meetings, we have, in the e-board, we have the beacons or, you know, when, things we meet on, whether it's budget, it supports one of the, one of the four or five areas that we currently have. And they do the same, this pretty much the same thing. Thank you.
Dr. Moten, one of the, or two of these things that seem to really fit together, I believe, is the first one, I'm talking about the teaching profession, about the collaboration and attracting a diverse and highly qualified staff, with the last one on the communication and culture, about creating a culture and a reverse action plan. To me, those two tie, why they tie so closely, we want to know that we're able to attract highly qualified staff that mirrors our diverse culture in our schools. I think for us to take the next step as a school system, I think we have great school district, I'll say that upfront, but to take the next step, I think those two have to tie together for us to move forward. Is that overstating it, or am I putting something into it that's not fair?
No, you're a good student tonight. You're spot on. Very good. We talked about areas that these goals and priorities overlap. So Shinley and Cindy did a lot of conversation about whether we should include those separately or whether we should combine them into one. And our goal is to make sure that we do not miss any portion or any of those action steps. So we are going to keep them separate, but we are going to measure them collectively. And our goal is to make sure that everything that we state under each one of those does happen. They're closely aligned, but separate enough that we want specific action steps under each one.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Cook.
Good.
Easy group tonight.
Again, I, I hope you all feel that we've done a pretty, very thorough job throughout this, especially dealing with everything else we've unfortunately had to deal with, with virtual meetings and hits and starts and all of these type of things due to, due to COVID and everything else going on in the world right now. But it's, you know, as we discovered, I think, the last, last round with the five-year plan, it's vitally, vitally important to have that long, longer-term vision to work towards for everyone that's clear and that's consistent and that we can measure and, and evaluate and hold accountable using. And then, during the, you know, the, the action work underneath that plan, and change, those things change annually or sometimes even quicker than that. Sometimes they may be, they may trend around a couple of years. A lot of the bigger ticket items are going to take, you know, may take the whole five years to get towards the end of. Some we may not totally complete. But, but having these clear-cut goals to guide the rest of the work we do is just vitally, vitally important. And I believe it's, it's held us in good stead the last five, five to six years. I think we've come a long way and we, I think we've all seen that. It's never going to be a finished product. It shouldn't be a finished product. It should always be a live document and a live thing that we're doing. You know, good enough is not a goal. We want excellence and we'll keep pushing. And then when we get excellence, we're going to want more of that. So, but I definitely want to commend everyone that a lot of hours went into, when you look at it in, in this kind of, in one format, you're like, okay, well, that's a, that's a small. But a lot of work from, from everyone, from folks in the community, our mayors and, and business people, and everyone had a lot of input in, in the beginning in shaping this. And then our staff and you all spent a day or two working on that also. Different levels of staff, teachers, we've had a lot, a lot of input, a lot of back and forth. And that will continue throughout the life of the, of the five-year plan too. It's, as I said, it's not something, back in the, I remember doing plans back in the old days and putting them in a pouring binder. And every person that's been in education for a little while, anyway, remembers that and then putting it on the shelf. And we'll see that next year or five years from now or three years from now, whatever the, the chosen piece was. But that's not the way we do things now. And we've got a great, a great team, great principals, great directors and folks and lead teachers and, and master teachers that, if we get this in their hands and, and get out of their way and they'll make it happen. Give them all the support we can. But anyway, I just, again, great job. Russ always calls us and always helps us stay clear and stay on task and pull us out of the mire sometimes of everyday stuff to work on the, on these big-ticket items and valuable, valuable partnership over the years. And hope to continue that. So let's open it, open up the phone for any other comments.
Dr. McMichael, I am so thoroughly impressed with this whole process and with the information that you guys have been able to give us. And I must say, I do not know where you guys find the time to balance such huge projects with all the things that you've been asked to do and the number of times you've been asked to pivot. Dr. Moten, this presentation was beautiful and informative and wonderful. And, you know, thank you so much. I just really appreciate you. I know that you being, you know, in charge of teaching and learning, there's been a lot of times that you've been asked to pivot in the last year. And this is just really informative and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you both. Appreciate it. Next steps are, if, definitely leave it with you all and if you have any questions over the next little bit. We do have our accreditation visit coming up on October 13th. We'd love to get a vote on it before then, if you all are comfortable with it at that point. Add it to the next agenda, if you all are comfortable with that, or we can do it some other time between there. And if we, you know, and if you all aren't ready for that by then, then we can work around that. But I think we could leave it up to the pleasure of the board at that point.
If no one has any opposition, I think it's good to go.
All right. Well, we'll plan on, then if that's, unless I hear something in the next couple of days, we'll go ahead and add, ask you for a vote on it at the next, at the board meeting.
Next week.
It's acceptable for everybody. If it's not, it's not, it's not a huge problem. We'll make it, we will, we can always pivot. All right. Russ, thank you so much.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, if you, I think, should we, we have to wait in 10 minutes then? We can, or, again, pleasure of the board, if you want to go ahead and get started. We're starting at 5:30, so I think we're fine.
We're live, so we're going to get started. Thanks, everybody, for coming to the best day in August meeting session to prepare for a meeting for next Tuesday. We call it the meeting to order for next week. Ms. Malouf, you will have the indication on the pledge. Okay. We'll approve the minutes from the last meeting. We'll approve the agenda, we'll over some committee reports. We'll look at the building committee superintendent, we'll have some recognitions, I believe. We're going to recognize Teachers of the Year. We may have some visitors, we may not. We may have some, at this point, okay. All right, Dr. Green.
The committee's report is there for your review. I'll like use it, it feels like you logged in four months ago. It was actually the last fully completed month, so that is the right date. Covered by our communications report. And I have no further comments on that. If you have questions.
Any questions? Ms. Persinger, enrollment report.
The enrollment report is finished. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay. Ms. Houston?
All right, I have my regular invoices paid between $10,000 and $24,999. First one is tools for FRE from the general fund, $18,987. It's for ID subscription. It was Soul Source and it's for just, it's district line. The next one is Dell from general fund, $17,715.39 for 21 Dell computers to the new BASSA teachers. And that was, of course, our BASSA. Income security for this paid out of the general fund, $12,258.40. And this is for the annual fire intrusion elevator monitoring in access to wide. Learning A to Z was paid out of consolidated funds for $11,279. And it was for Rads Kids Plus License, which is the learning A to Z. And that was for 74 classrooms for Auburn, Full Smith, and Bethany. Oconee River Justice, Justice was paid out of the general fund, $18,325. And that was for K through A teachers participation in the Oconee River Youth Science and Technology Center. And that was for 733 teachers, so it was mostly district wide. And at Minton, E from FASDA, paid out the general fund, $21,300. And that was for courseware for 150 online classes. And that was for the All-Termites School. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Pearl.
It's about our summer renovation projects and a couple of other things to be repubbed in all those. Our new elementary school, the Gossmane campus. Something like groundbreaking out there very soon. Got some pictures there, overhead views of mostly soil. Motion control, big bed and place, self fence, tree safe fence, and also fertilization of equipment. So we're excited to have a way up there. Actually, this is a great operation, this is what I've prepared the way for from the building store in the future athletic facilities as well. So it's probably larger than just the elementary store, this. Here, out here. Also, our transportation shop, getting some much-needed equipment out there. Maybe just going out that upper building, creating office space, office room, restroom, spaces up there. Also get a new, you know, booth. But there, going way over there, just a little bit of demolition. Project first, we want it to just happen here. There, the summer, so decided to have it built up.
Any questions?
How long have you been since we refurbished that transportation area? Do you remember?
We haven't done that since I've been here.
Okay. Time flies when you, when.
We built a new building out of that, about 2008.
Okay.
Upper shop. Upper shop, we're actually.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Moten, anything else?
Welcome, Dr. Cook, for voice of calling. Good evening. Tonight, I wanted to share with you an opportunity that we are working on this school year and potentially over the next five years. But we recently applied to be a part of the Economic Development Partnership, EDP Designation Program. This is done through the Georgia Department of Education through CTAE. And this is a district-wide process that prepares the district to adopt best practices and behaviors that support economic development, strengthen our CTAE programs, and align our CTAE courses with regional industries. This application process started in the late spring with a commitment of our superintendent, our business community represented by Joe Holt, and our Director of Economic Development, Lisa Malouf. This year, in collaboration with our business and economic development, we'll work on six key areas. Those are CTA advisory committees, industry certification of our pathway programs, alignment of our work-based learning programs, employability skills development, pathway alignment with local and regional, the local and regional economy, culture of economic development within the school district and the community. In addition, we have a goal of having all of our CTAE teachers participate in an educator externship. An externship is when a teacher, administrator, or counselors spend at least three days with a business partner and they spend time shadowing the employees in the various departments and putting together a culminating presentation and a classroom lesson. And this summer, with the help of Lisa and WorkSource Georgia, we were able to have two of our Barrow County educators participate in a week-long educator externship at one of our local industry steps. They were eighth-grade teacher Washington Lyles for BASSA, and eighth-grade teacher Killian, Killian Begno from Westside. And later this fall, I hope to bring them back so they can share with you their experiences of their externship and present some pictures, sort of showcase the lessons that they did in their classrooms. And so, again, this is a designation that we will work on this year. We'll have routine meetings with representatives from the DOE. And then at the end of the school year, they'll sort of give us their stamp of approval if we meet all of their milestones throughout the year. So we're really excited to be able to get this designation for the district and really highlight our relationship with our local businesses, industries, and economic development. So just wanted to share that opportunity with you and hopefully be able to share some more things later this year. Any questions about that? What you have there is the sort of press release about, just to get it, explains the program.
Good stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Moten? You good? Okay. Ms. Banks? Okay. I don't think we have any old business or clarifying previous items. So we'll move on to the consent agenda and the new business. Ms. Wood is the same, is that the same, you're back?
So, good evening. So yearly, I get the pleasure of sharing with you our FY '22 CTAE federal and state budgets. Our CTA teachers are working hard, provide hands-on, real-world learning opportunities for our students. And we're proud that our CTA students who are completing at least one pathway at Barrow have a graduation rate of over 94%. So this year, we will receive a little over $428,000 in federal and state grants. These funds will support 60 CTA teachers in 30 different pathways. We welcome two new ad teachers, one to Appalachia and a new ad program at Westside. We will receive a little over $117,000 from Perkins Five, which is for our program improvement, which goes to make sure that our teachers have the updated equipment and supplies they need to support their programs. Perkins Five Plus will be used to support our CTA students' preparation for their end-of-pathway assessments, which is part of our credentials of value. Perkins Five Professional Development Funds support our C-Turn, which is our CTAE Resource Network, which is, which provides free workshops and professional learning for all CTA teachers, counselors, and administrators. This year, we apply for construction-related equipment grant funds in the amount of eighty, a little over $88,000. And that is to support the new ad program at Westside. And then a smaller modification grant, we work really hard with facilities. And so with Appalachia having some renovations this summer, we were able to apply for a grant for the healthcare lab, so they will receive some funding to update some of their equipment at Appalachia. This year, our Appalachia Law Pathway will be a pilot, will be a pilot school district with a law pathway to go through industry certifications, they're piloting new standards for their law pathway. So they'll receive $10,000. The C T A E supervision grant supports the C T A director position. We receive funding for extended day and extended year funds that support 19 teachers on extended day. And this is a matching grant, so the state provides us with funds, and then the district provides a matching to those funds. We have nine teachers, nine ad teachers that will receive ad extended day and extended year. And then the youth apprenticeship grant supports our work-based learning and youth apprenticeship coordinators at Appalachia in Wyndham Barrow. So that is the overview of the budget. So each year, I have to present that and allow you guys to overview that. Any questions about C T A budget?
Okay, consent agenda? Okay. Thank you very much. John Sinclair, I'm going to be on this for a few minutes here.
Yes, sir. Can everyone hear me okay?
Can. Yes.
All right, thank you. All right. At the July 28th, 2020 work session and the January 26th, 2021 work sessions, the board authorized I T S waive normal purchasing regulations due to product scarcity and high competition for technology purchases from other organizations worldwide. This authorization was subject to normal chain of command oversight and board reporting. This allowed us to rapidly purchase technology when needs and funds were identified and supplies were sourced. And previously, by the time regular protocols were followed, the supply of technology desired had been depleted before approval could be obtained. At the first work session, the board approved a $100,000 cap. At the second one, it was a $200,000 cap. The first one's cap was reached through purchase of Chromebooks, webcams, headsets, laptops, and that authorization concluded. The second authorization was used solely on Chromebooks in various purchases up to 162,000, and we haven't used it since March 2021 and basically consider that closed. We face the possibility of the same situation a third time. We're in much better shape due to the previous purchases, but with the most recent surge and uncertainties in both the shipping and technology industries, as well as ramifications from the pandemic, we need to be ready to rapidly respond to urgent needs if and when they arise again. As a reminder, from the second work session request, at the time, as an example, we'd received requests from two schools to buy Chromebooks that totaled under 25,000. But by the time we were able to obtain a third quote, the first quote was no longer valid because they had sold out of their stock in less than two days. That's the kind of timeframes we're having to deal with. Sometimes even faster than that. So as we work through this fiscal year and face another peak of the pandemic, this issue is going to crop up again. So we're asking the board to once again approve temporary purchasing discretion and flexibility to the I T S department, allowing us to waive normal purchasing procedures with superintendent approval when necessary due to scarcity or urgent need. We will still be following the spirit of competitive purchasing. We'll search for the best price, we'll seek competitive quotes if they can be had in a timely manner and so forth. And subject, of course, to normal through the purchasing process, that's Dr. Green, Dr. Mouton, Ms. Houston. And so we are asking for discretion to spend up to a total spending cap of $250,000. Prices on technology have gone up across the board in various technology purchases when the need arises. As always, this discretionary authority will not be used unless absolutely necessary. The financial impact will be 250,000 for various district budgets. So the superintendent is recommending authorizing, authorizing the I T S department to waive normal bird purchasing policies during COVID-19 crisis when necessary due to product supply scarcity or urgent need, subject to a grand total authorization cap of 250,000 in spending authority, and subject to best efforts at competitive shopping, normal approval loops, and normal board guidelines for reporting.
Questions?
This is Lynn. John, do you need this approval before next week? Is this something urgent that you're trying to order supplies now?
No, ma'am. At the moment, we have no immediate need, just forecasting the future that we may be in that situation. So no, this can wait till the normal board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Consent agenda?
I'm just going to ask, does this, can this wait till our regular scheduled board meeting or?
That's what I'm just asking.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we're not under any pressing need immediately. We're just anticipating what we don't know is going to happen to us in the future. So it can wait till the board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're good. Network cabling.
Thank you. During the course of the year, I T S routinely purchases low voltage data cabling services for data moves, adds, repairs, miscellaneous stuff that crops up during the year. Separately, these small jobs cost less than the $25,000 threshold for which we have to go out to bid. And typically, the cost below the $5,000 threshold for which we're required to get multiple quotes. Of course, we always shop competitively anyway. However, when combined, these jobs over the course of a year can total over 25,000. So in an effort to better meet the spirit and letter of district purchasing policies, as well as provide flexibility in speed of acquiring services, an R F P was posted for general low voltage cabling services for the current fiscal year. The R F P requested costs for single, dual, triple, quadruple, quintuple, and sextuple data drop installations, which are our most common formats of data cabling we do. Hourly rates and materials markup rates for other jobs such as installing audio video cabling. And that covers most of the small jobs that we perform in a typical year. Two vendors responded, Tech Optics and 12 Star Services. You can see the various different replies below. 99% of our miscellaneous cabling work employs category six cabling, which is that first block, and/or miscellaneous hourly rate type of work, video cabling for projectors, for instance, for which Tech Optics is the low bid responded. Tech Optics has done similar business with the district previously and satisfactorily, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. Based on the previous year's miscellaneous data cabling work, we are requesting authorization up to $45,000 in miscellaneous data cabling jobs from this R F P. Budget, the financial impact will be 45,000 from various budget sources. So the superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of miscellaneous low voltage data cabling services to Tech Optics of Wyder, Georgia for a maximum total of $45,000 during the 2021, 2022 fiscal year.
I'd imagine this is a big benefit to them too, to be a provider for locking them in.
I imagine so. For clarity, this doesn't lock them in. If we feel it's at our benefit to go out to competitively shop instead, we still retain that right. This is just if we have odd jobs where we just need to get it done. This will be the competitive purchase to allow us to go to them.
Consent agenda? Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Lightspeed Web Filter Renewal. The district's web content filtering solution is due for renewal. As a reminder, Lightspeed is the partner who joined us last year and rolled out their product for us for free when we were facing the rapid deployment of Chromebooks to the home, and we needed a solution that would be federal CIPPA law compliant. They just did it. They gave it to us and said, we know you guys are already looking at purchasing us, roll this out and use it. And they were a great partner at that point. We did ultimately purchase it from them. We've been very happy with their service and their product for the year. The manufacturer of the product, Lightspeed, sells the solution to us through Soul Source vendor Howard Technologies of Laurel, Mississippi. We have done significant business with Howard in the past. They are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. And the financial impact is $70,800 from I T S funds. The superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of the Lightspeed web filtering solution from Soul Source provider Howard Technology Solutions in the amount of $70,800.
Questions? Consent agenda? Okay.
Thank you. Okay, last one. ClearTouch interactive panels. The district has numerous purchases of ClearTouch panels anticipated for the current school year from various budgets. An R F P was posted and six vendors responded. Howard Computers posed a substitute product, which was in violation of the terms of the R F P, and they were disqualified. The qualifying low bid Tech Optics of Wyder, Georgia met the terms of the R F P. They've done similar business with the district previously and satisfactorily, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. The purchases that we are aware of immediately are listed below. Technology refresh, refresh in the district in general, 132 panels for 521,000. Panels specifically for Yargo, 47 units, 185,000. Panels for Westside, four additional units that will complete Westside, also, I'm sorry, will complete Yargo. Their whole school will be deployed with panels. Four more for Westside will complete their deployment, 15,800. 38 units for Auburn will complete their deployment, $150,000. And 29 units for Holstein Beck will complete their deployment, 114,000. In addition to the specific purchases listed above, we are requesting authorization from the board to use this R F P purchasing vehicle for the remainder of the academic year for up to another 100 units, subject, of course, to normal board reporting guidelines. The financial impact is as listed below. Total district cost is $987,857.50 and future purchase authorization of $395,143. The superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of ClearTouch interactive panels from low bid responded Tech Optics of Wyder, Georgia in the amount of $987,857.50 for 250 panels. The superintendent further recommends authorizing the use of this R F P response for future panel purchases during the current fiscal year, up to an additional 100 panels for a total cap of an additional $395,143.
John, this is Ricky. This is just the cost of the panel. Who installs these?
This also includes the cost of installation, and Tech Optics will do the installation for us.
This, this is the total price, Lynn?
Total price, yes, sir. Licensing, panel, installation services, the whole kit and caboodle.
Any other questions? Consent agenda?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks.
City of Auburn, Prodigal's Bath Park and Utility Eastside, Auburn Elementary School. Thirty-foot temporary construction eastward, like the permanent east side. Thirty-foot temporary construction, he's been at Auburn Elementary School.